Well, welcome. This is Thursday, March 19th, 2020. A special meeting slash emergency meeting, Curry County Board of Commissioners. Did Commissioner Pash call in? Are you on the phone?
Commissioner Pash said he would call in in 2:15 to 2:30.
Great, thank you, Staff Jesuit. So, everybody kind of bear with us. We've been going through some movements forward here and dealing with the COVID-19 issue. And that's why we called this meeting. Frankly, I wanted to postpone this meeting till tomorrow, but I got convinced that today would be better. And I'm now in full agreement with that and appreciative of. So, we're gonna do, even though it's a special meeting, we're gonna go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance, if we could, please. Mr. Gold, would you mind leading us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we would like to identify the folks that are on the phone and speak right up. And then after you identify yourself, could we ask you, remind you to mute your phone? So, let's go ladies first, A through M.
Shelley Denny, Chief Deputy Clerk.
Shelley Denny, thank you.
Debbie Crumley. Julie Swift. Debbie Crumley, Treasurer.
Thank you, Treasurer Crumley. Okay, how about men, A through M? Or did we leave out anybody? Just double checking on the lady's side there?
Yes, this is Renee Cohen, Curry County Clerk.
Thank you, okay. Any others?
Summer Madison, Economic Development. Not sure if you heard Julie Swift, Carol in HR.
Yes, and all of your volumes are very good. Good job, Eric and Miranda. Any man on the phone, A through M, please? Thank you, CEO Fortman. Okay, who is...
Thomas Langford with the trial court. I'm crashing the party.
Hey, we're glad to have you here. Thanks for checking in with us. Who is right after CEO Fortman? Did I miss one? Okay, any other men, A through M?
Josh Austin, County Clerk.
Thank you, Josh. Any men, N through Z?
Josh Van Syl, District Attorney.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so again, I'll ask everybody to mute your phones. And if you just want to say, Commissioner Boyce, when you have a slight pause there, I'll make sure and get to you. I'm taking notes here. So, to my right is Commissioner Gold. I'm told that Commissioner Pash will be joining us within 10 or 15 minutes. To Commissioner Gold's right is Council Huddle and Staff Jesuit in the audience. I have Assessor Jim Cohen and Phil Dixon from Kuzse Curry Electric, our IT. I have Roadmaster Christensen and Director of Planning, Curry County Planning, Becky Crockett. Thanks very much for being here. So, the purpose of this meeting is just to, you know, I'm gonna start with just offering a little bit of good news. You know, we worked very hard yesterday to coordinate Council Huddle and his staff on the whole emergency declaration. And that started from George Rhodes. We'll start at the bottom here. And he sent a nice thank you letter to Council Huddle. And we found out from David Brock Smith and his Chief of Staff, Shale Megson, and I'll just read that part there. "Excellent job, George. While I was monitoring the county meeting yesterday in the president's press conference, I was also listening to the Joint Special Committee on Coronavirus Response. During their discussion, they talked about this topic, which is SBA, and immediately went through." My mind, Curry was already on this. George was there to talk about it already that morning. So, just, that's really good news. You heard Emergency Management Coordinator Doomeier today say, "We're also connected to California." We're not exactly sure what that means, but it certainly does not put the county in a bad spot when it comes to recognizing the impact, the incredible negative impact on our employers, our companies, our small businesses here, our big businesses. And so, help is on the way. And I know that, as I also mentioned earlier today, Economic Development Coordinator Madison has done some great work on this. And in conjunction with David Brock Smith's office and George Rhodes and myself, we've got some really good things happening there to help the businesses prepare. So, the next thing is, I just got this, just a little update. Yes, this, let's see, on the US Department Homeland Security, the latest on workers, the whole infrastructure and what those guidelines are as we move forward. So, that'll be on our website. And the last thing here. The news is, and yes, this is my first cousin, very proud of her, Oregon Secretary of State Bev Klarno. The May primary, we've been wondering if that might be postponed. Oregon has a mail-in elections process system, so we're proud to say that it looks like our primary election is gonna be as we had hoped. So, that's very good news. Also, one more thing. I got a call from Shale Megson. Get my notes here, forgive me. Douglas County Commissioners, of course, I have a call into them. But they had a drive-through testing on the Corona system. And they had this set up to where a new company that's called Quest, and they have to be able to qualify for this test, you have to have a doctor's note ordering the test. And this company has a pretty quick turnaround. It's a little bit expensive, but apparently it's a very good system. And I'm also gonna give the link to that, just if there's people out in our community that wanna take a look at this link. And then, the idea here is that, the idea is that in this drive-through testing, if we can implement this to Curry County in an accelerated way, when and if the time come and as is needed, the whole system would involve the Curry Health Network, Public Health Authority Ward, the fairgrounds, if that's the place we decided would be the logical location to do this, the Sheriff's Department for Traffic Control. I'm hoping we don't get to that situation, but Douglas County took some very proactive opportunities there. And it looks like it has been a very successful program. So, I wanna open it up to the floor here. I'd like the people in the audience, if any of you would like to speak. I know that you had, Assessor Cohen, an idea we were gonna call on you for IT preparation and for off-campus work and how you might connect with Kuzse Curry and our IT people. And that's probably not all you want to discuss, but I'll let you take the sequence that suits you.
Yes, thank you, Jim Cohen, Curry County Assessor. And really, I asked Phil if he could attend the meeting this afternoon, because I know that there's been several department heads and elected officials who have wondered how the remote working process might be set up and, well, really, what they need to do with IT to get that going. And this started out to be a department head and elected officials meeting. And I was hoping maybe Phil could address that for us. And maybe we can get Phil's part out of the way and let him go back to work on some of the other stuff that he's trying to catch up on.
Phil, welcome. Good, great to have you here. Is everybody able to hear okay at this point?
Commissioners?
Okay.
My name's Phil Dixon, representing Kuzse Curry Electric. Here to answer a few questions regarding the situation. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think, okay, thanks for that response. Much appreciated. Go ahead, Mr. Dixon, thank you.
Assessor Cohen asked a question about setting us up for folks to be able to work from home. Currently, we do allow this without much change. Those individuals that have county-issued laptops typically already have the ability to work remotely from their home or library or any place there's a Wi-Fi signal. And we are in a position to even add some additional software to desktop computers if it was so chosen by the department heads that they wanted a computer for an employee to carry home a computer that wasn't a laptop. We can also arrange that. So, it's not very difficult. And we just did a few minutes' notice and some emails from the department heads of kind of what they're planning and any questions they may have regarding this. They'll reach out to us. We'll get them a good answer and make sure you guys can continue on with business as usual. Anything else?
Yeah, hang on, go ahead.
My home computer? You'll set it up so that my home computer can access the county?
It will only be county-owned computers. It must be something the county...
Council Huddle?
Thank you. So, you said employees who already have a county-issued laptop, it won't be a home computer. What do you think our current capacity is as far as county-owned laptops versus number of employees? In other words, if we went to a county-wide, you know, work-from-home, are we able to do that with the current number of, you know, laptops that we have?
No.
Okay.
The majority of the county machines are desktops. They're more cost-effective than going with a laptop. But I would say if you were to throw a quick percentage out, I would think at least 25% of the county computers right now in key departments are laptops.
Okay, I see, for instance, Commissioner Gold's got a laptop. I don't know if Commissioner Boyce has one over there. I think Commissioner Pash already has his laptop at home. I have a county...
Oh, thank you, you're here. Welcome.
And I have one, but I'm just wondering if departments, you know, identify, and of course, some departments won't need, you know, working from home at the road department doesn't make a ton of sense. They're out in the field. But other departments, I don't know if all the departments have laptops so much. You think maybe 25% of our county workforce has laptops available to them?
Roughly, without coming out, I wasn't prepared for that question.
Sure, thank you.
But I would think that would be a fair estimate. And I do believe most county directors of the departments, most people are using a laptop. Could be a couple of exceptions, but we even got Roadmaster Richardson, or Christensen, rather, he's now with a laptop. Most of the VOC has one. Assessor Cohen has one. Miss Crockett, she has a laptop as well. Most of the people that are running the departments are on laptops.
And what the VPN allows you to do is access your county email accounts and your county server files?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, I wanna ask just a quick question, then I'm gonna call on the other two commissioners. I think two months ago, you had kind of a little VPN seminar. That was very helpful. I wonder if you might have to do a little brush-up on that at some point?
At any time you need those skills kind of polished up.
Do you think that might be appropriate? Okay, good. And everybody knows what that is. It just sets the whole program.
Really, the only issue that we would have that I can foresee is printing. People might not have printers at their house that are compatible with their home laptop. So, that could be a bit of an issue, but they could still print. The jobs would end up going to your county copier or your county...
We might end up going paperless yet, right? Commissioner Gold?
A couple of questions. I don't think it would be real difficult for us to unhook the desktops and take them home and hook them up at home. Even I can do that, techno-retard. But also, on the printer issue, would it be possible to maybe forward the email to our personal email and then print it from there?
As a technical answer, that is possible, but the legality, you'd probably have to run by a county council to make sure that there's no, I wouldn't wanna give you, you know, opinion. Technically, that's no problem.
Okay.
So, everybody that's on the phone, do any of you have, oh, Commissioner Pash, I'm sorry. You first?
Well, I just have one question from Phil, if I could ask. I mean, for, as far as I can see, for really essential services, the only person I can see that we might have a problem with is the Elections Office, the County Reporter and all that. And I'm just wondering, does she have a laptop or if not? Could you give her one?
Currently, both the clerk and the deputy clerk are using laptops.
Okay, good, all right, thanks.
And also, just real quick, we do have two, maybe three laptops right now downstairs. I have one ready to go as like a loner laptop. And I can have two more ready to go probably by Monday.
That's great, that's great.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Pash?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the phone that needs to ask questions or even, for that matter, that might see difficulties with this system? I don't think we're saying that everybody's going home, including the department heads. I mean, that's up to each individual department, is my initial take as we sit here today. So, anybody on the phone want to ask questions or make comments?
Commissioner Boyce?
Yes.
This is Debbie Crumley.
Hi.
I do not have a laptop to take home. Would that be a possibility that I could obtain one?
I think I'm hearing Phil say he has one now and hopes to have two additional ones for a total of three, but perhaps by Monday. So, yeah, I would think you would be a high priority.
All right, thank you.
Staff Jesuit, did you have something else? Okay, Mr. Gold?
My question on the Treasurer's laptop would be, would she need more capacity than a regular laptop because of the big spreadsheets and so forth that she's working with?
To answer that question, fortunately, the two, we have three right now available. One is a bit of an older machine, kind of works in a pinch. The other two are fairly modern. And I would need some time to prep the laptop for Treasurer Crumley to be able to use. Each department has a basic software package. Then everybody could have very unique pieces of software that would be, you know, instrumental in their department. So, there again, with Treasurer Crumley, she would need some additional financial software. We'd have to take some time to get loaded, but we could handle that.
Okay.
Council Huddle, anything else?
No, I do agree that I think the Treasurer is a key, personnel who should have a laptop.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the phone? Don't be bashful. There's no rush here.
This is Leah, with Oasis on the phone.
Hi, Leah.
Hi. Hey, I appreciate you conducting this meeting the way that you have. I just wanna make a comment that I am in a conversation with Oregon Community Foundation and the Ford Telling Foundation, along with a bunch of community partners just initiated this conversation, oh, a few hours ago, to see if they have some emergency funds that can assist low-income folks who are the unemployment benefits are not going to be enough to help them pay their rent or groceries or whatever it might be to help bridge that gap. So, when that comes to fruition, I'll give you more information. We wanted to be able to help perfect homelessness in the wake of all this. So, I wanted to make you a bright event.
Well, thank you. Much appreciated, Leah. Any more questions for Phil? He's, John, but he'll get back to work.
There was a question briefly that you touched on, Commissioner Gold, regarding desktops going home. There again, as we were directed or are directed to make that available to go, we'll have to add a little bit of software to the desktop to allow that virtual private network connection.
And so, I have a question related to that. Would you be able to maybe add the printer software that we have at home to the desktop? So, it would be easier for the people to print if they needed to?
I wouldn't think that would be illegal.
I don't foresee, just right here, without thoroughly thinking that through, I don't really see a problem with that.
Okay.
I might wanna really, you know, think that through and look at it from different angles, but I don't see any issue.
Commissioner Gold, you had, I think, a good idea that it could be forwarded to county staff here, the head office or just about anywhere that could be within the county confines that could print it and then get it to whomever. So, that may not be...
I will share with you too, on every laptop that we put forward, as well as desktop as well, we have the ability to print to a PDF, meaning anything that you choose to print, it turns it into a document that you would save on your computer in a file. So, it wouldn't necessarily hit a printer, but you could then keep all those documents in a folder. And then, when you're by a printer, then you could do...
I guess I'm just kind of old-school and I have to be able to touch it and read it and anyway.
Any more questions for IT Dixon?
Thank you, Commissioners, Councils.
Good work, thank you. Roadmaster Christensen or Planning Director Crockett, did either one of you want to speak? Okay, you're okay for now.
I think so.
All right. I'm gonna go to Assessor, excuse me, Clerk Cohen first, please. Do you have something you wanna? You got the news about the election, huh? For the primary seems to be as planned.
Primary, this is Renee Cohen, County Clerk. Primary is on schedule as normal.
Did you have anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, so, we have, we're looking at a news release, possibly, that Council Huddle and his staff have worked on. And I won't read the whole thing, but it's a little over a page. I think it's pretty thorough. It's a general reminder of where the county sits right now, day-to-day basis, you know, the general social distancing, the requirements there, stop the spread. And, but yet, how we can keep our county services intact as best we can with Director Crockett here and Assessor Cohen. I think I'll start, come back to you, Jim. If you wouldn't mind, give the group, you know, a little bit of a synopsis on what you've set up in your office and why.
Jim Cohen, County Assessor. What we've set up...
Pull that mic up. There you go, thank you.
What we've set up in the Assessor's office is that we've closed our door to walk-in traffic and are encouraging people to transact their business either online or by telephone calls. However, if people absolutely need to come in, please call us and make an appointment, and we will take care of them. We've been doing that since lunch today, and already we've had four people come in just because they weren't aware of the change in policy. And so, we opened the door to them and took care of their business anyway. So, I'm hoping that this is gonna work out well for everybody. The reason for it is that what we seem to be learning around the country and statewide is that social distancing is a factor in keeping the coronavirus from spreading. And so, you know, that's what we're all about. It seems like corporations are doing this. Other county governments are doing this. I forwarded you a copy of what they're doing in Washington County. And it looks like they're county-wide, pretty much urging the public to transact their business either online or by phone or make appointments to come in, pretty much like what we're doing in the Assessor's office. And it looks like Kuz County has also signed an order. And I think you got a copy of that. I brought a copy by. Hopefully, you got to see it.
Good information.
Which is essentially doing the same thing. They're actually doing a public closure of their courthouse and other county offices for the safety of county employees and the public. "County offices shall be closed to the general public where possible," it says. The goal is, department heads and elected officials should make the determination of whether their offices are gonna remain partially or fully closed to the public. I would consider what we're doing in the Assessor's office a partial closure. We're still gonna transact business with the public. And at least so far, we've had no difficulty in taking care of the needs that have arisen. In fact, this is new. This is a time in our history that's unprecedented in any of our lifetimes, right? National and a global public health emergency. So, I would say that at least for the Assessor's office, things may change for the better or the worse, just depending on what takes place or how successful we are in preventing the spread of this virus. But I would say that over the past couple of days, I've gotten questions from other county department heads and elected officials, you know, asking me about what I'm doing and not knowing for certain whether or not they're allowed to do that for their departments because they're employees and they are concerned about this spread. And I had hoped that, and maybe Council Huddle would tell us that in your earlier meeting today and yesterday, you seem maybe to have allowed for that, allowed for department heads and elected officials to make that determination for their own operations. And so, I guess...
I just think we want to tell the public, though, and I presume everybody would be in agreement, we want to do it through the press release.
Absolutely.
We have a unified policy. And I think that's the best basis for the two meetings we're having today and I assume the subsequent meetings. Director Crockett, would you mind coming up? I just have a quick question for you. Jim, you can stay there, but I'm a... That's a pretty tall microphone, isn't it? I think you're, I think the determination you made for your department down there is pretty similar to what Assessor Cohen has done with his department. Is that a fair analysis?
Well, first of all, we're open for business.
Yes.
We're just open for business in a little bit different way.
Okay.
We encourage people to call or do their business transaction online. If they can't submit their applications online and pay with a credit card, we have put a box outside our door and they're instructed to put the plans in the box. We actually have 100% chlorine granules in the box that we take out. And we're having a policy internally to leave stuff in the box with chlorine granules for at least a couple of days. And we came to this, I'm representing building and planning at this point. We sat down and thought, you know, what's going on here? We're getting a lot of people from Seattle, a lot of people from the Bay Area, people from Europe coming in and looking for properties in this part of the country. And in large part, because they're looking to find a place they can isolate themselves. That's concerning when people come into the counter, they lean over the counter and they tell us where they're from. We decided that wasn't good. And so, internally, when we talked, it was clear that almost every person in building and planning had a partner or spouse with a compromised immune system. So, that was kind of the clincher for us. Yesterday morning, we decided to just close the door and go totally online, which is, for us, it's somewhat consistent with our current operations. We do have a couple of issues out there that we have not resolved yet. And I will talk to the Oregon Planning Directors tomorrow morning about procedures related to the 120-day and 150-day requirement by state statute. And John said he's worked on that already at the state level, which I appreciate. The other issue is the Planning Commission. We cannot hold a Planning Commission meeting where people want to come and testify. So, we're struggling with how best to do that. And I'm gonna wait and have that discussion with the Planning Directors tomorrow morning. But, yeah, it's a pretty scary issue when you know that your partner is severely, in some cases, immune-compromised. So, we have to do something.
So, quick question here. From what you just presented there From what you just presented there and the basis of your decision, which I agree with, just one Commissioner here, you're probably not real anxious to offer appointments as the assessor is. Is that fair to say, or what's your thoughts there?
No, we'll take appointments. We've had appointments. We set them up carefully, clean before the person comes and clean after the person comes. We make sure that they sit six feet apart, and we're careful where they come in and out. The only concern that is still up there for us is public utilization of the restrooms. And I do put that on the table as a continuing concern for us downstairs.
Well said and appreciated. So, before, so I really am hearing that you both have identical approaches to, you know, your directing, your whole programs. Is that, I'm not seeing any difference, I guess what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I don't know, probably in the building and planning, we take more money than Mr. Cullen does, and, you know, there has been some concern brought up by a couple of people. When we take credit cards, we have to charge 2.5% interest on that credit card transaction. So, there's been some concern with that. We've suggested if they don't want to do the credit card, they can put a check in the box out front, and we'll check the box on a regular basis and get the check.
Okay, before you leave, I just had one more question for you, Assessor Cullen. Are you sending your appraisers out in the field much at this time?
I think it's safe to send our appraisers out in the field. The one thing that we won't be doing is having them initiate contact with the public.
Okay.
There's plenty of vacant properties to do appraisals on out there, and in this day and age, it's not ideal to have them stop at the curb in front of somebody's house and do the work...
Sure.
...without initiating contact, but it's what we're left with. So, there will be, they will be doing that sort of work, too.
So, do either one of you...
And you asked if we, if I was doing the same thing as Director Crockett, I would have to say that just her being today, here today, I've already learned a couple of things.
Yes.
And, which is, to me, one of the reasons for us to get together and talk about these things. First, you know, I wish I was as intelligent as she is and opened with saying first, you know, "We are open for business." May I plagiarize you on that? And then the other thing...
That's gonna be the top sentence in our news release.
The other thing that I've learned is they've got a box that they put chlorine crystals in for accepting documents and things, and a couple of the things that I've learned that I'm gonna work on for our office. We do take a fair amount of cash. Right now, our thoughts were to isolate the cash, you know, to the extent we can for however many days seems appropriate, and then...
Okay, I want to ask you both... Six feet. No, I want to ask one more question, then I'd like to go to Commissioner Pash. So, let's talk about the restrooms. Let's get it out in the open. I mean, do we have a recommendation? I certainly understand the reluctance, and is that, I mean, how do we analyze? Do we have a policy? Do we have a procedure that we could do? I mean, is, I used to do that at my lodge a lot of times, you know, multiple times per day, even when we didn't have these kind of situations. So, what's your thoughts there? And how we can protect our staff?
I agree, that's gotta be a concern, and I don't know what the answer to your question is, but it seems like our Director of Maintenance, Chuck, maybe ought to get together with our public health authority, Ms. Ward...
Okay.
And, what, determine what the appropriate rotation or schedule should be.
I'm gonna bring that up this afternoon, so... Anything else, Director Crockett? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I want to go to Commissioner Pash. Do you have anything first there?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm not sure whether this would be appropriate or not for the restrooms, but as we are in a public building, are we required to keep those open at all times? Or could we have some sort of a, like a fob system or something, so employees only could use the restrooms? Just curious, is that legal?
We'll research that, and we can start that process. So, Council Huddle, did you have anything else?
No, my, you know, just two-second answer for Commissioner Gold is I think there is a requirement that we have public restrooms available, but I will research that and get a definitive answer.
Except when in a state of emergency.
I suppose in a state of emergency, a lot of things can change.
We gotta protect our staffs, okay. So, we talked, oh, I want just to bring up, did you have anything else? Okay, anybody else on the phone with questions with either Director Crockett or Assessor Cullen?
This is Connie Hunter, and I have some information that might, well, kind of what is regarding the court. I know that courts will postpone orders until May, and I know the city manager and municipal court judge are working during conversations. They're likely to postpone their court proceedings, but many courts, of course, many courts will do the same thing, but something that Gary Melman shared with me is that a private vendor has also come out with a new virtual court program that some of the stakeholders are looking at, and so I didn't know if the county knew about that, and I just wanted to interject that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter. Go ahead, I was just gonna call on you.
All right, thank you, sir. So, I'll talk, am I a little too loud, or is this okay?
Your volume's very good, thank you.
All right, just wanted to make sure. So, in respect to at least eight courts, we're having conference calls with Chief Justice, State Court Administrator, twice a week right now. We have a chief justice order that is restricting our courthouse operations in what the court is hearing that is effective through next Friday. The indication is that May likely will be extended, I do not know the period of time. The problem that state courts run into is there are statutorily mandated hearings that we have to hold at this time. Those hearings are matters with individuals in custody, juveniles that are in custody, arraignments, these, those kind of matters, shelter hearings, restraining order matters have to be heard at the court. We also have to hear any company trial unless individuals waive that 60-day trial requirement of this process report. So, we have greatly reduced the types of hearings that we are having. The matters that we can reschedule, we have rescheduled those, we have moved those matters out. We're currently reviewing all of our matters after March 27th, with the expectation that things will continue to get extended through the chief justice order, potentially into late April, late May. If that's the case, we will continue to follow the guidance of the chief justice order instead of the governor to move matters out. The problem we continue to run into is those statutory requirements. We are moving minimum court services, we have reduced, we have reduced the court staffing pattern by over 50%. If you combine all my staff, Lucy Curry, these conditions are the same, are the same conditions being applied in all 36 counties that have state court operations. This is a very trying time, and a time that we really don't have a roadmap for, so we are very much finding the target, pointing and shooting, and hoping that we land on mark and do what we need to do to protect not only ourselves and the public as much as we can, but unfortunately, because of those statutory requirements at this time, we have to have some limited service. And with that limited service means our windows are open at this time because of some of those matters that have to be filed and require public contact. So, that's kind of where we stand. We don't have, we don't have the luxury of being able to set everything out because it's only violations, or it's only minor misdemeanor charges that have to be continued. Some of these things just cannot be continued. We are the nature of public service and the public forum that we work in. So, it is a seed that no one's traveled in, and we're trying to all travel in it together. So, I'm appreciative of this phone call and these conversations.
Mr. Langford, how can we get that information out to our public? What would you recommend there? Even a simple email might be effective. What's your thoughts?
So, I have sent it to the Curry pilot on our website. I have a press release on our website, I've sent it to all the bar and community members, all the police agencies I've communicated that with. I am more than willing to send that press, I think I believe I see the press release from Commissioners on Monday when I send it out as well. You can take that press release if you would like and attach it to your press release. That would be completely fine by me. It's posted in the courthouses along with signs urging the public and encouraging the public not to enter the building if there's a secret note on whatever scheduled matters. Understand for the most part, the public is not going to be in the building because of how we've rescheduled things, but if parties are gonna want to file documents at this time, we can't turn them away. There's no, we have the legal obligation to accept those documents from the party, and our windows are open. Same way, if the parties want to make statements at this time, we're not turning those individuals away. And I understand, the chief justice understands, the state court administrator understands, the marshal's office understands that this virus lives on cardboard for at least 24 hours, could live on paper for up to 12 hours. There's some understanding, there's some information that it may only live on paper documents for three to four hours. Again, I'm not a scientist, some of this is area on the side of caution, some of this is handling documents with courts with that separability. But whatever you need from me in terms of trying to communicate better to the public, I'm more than willing to provide, to share. We'll do another press release if the chief justice extends her order on March 27th. I'm working on that now, just with the understanding this may happen. That's gonna go into a little bit more detail for the public and our partner agencies, what can happen in the court, which is still for the most part business as normal. If you're filing a document, if you're trying to get a hearing, it's not business as normal. We're looking out to the future. We don't know what the future looks like right now, and that is unnerving to all of us involved because we don't know if this could be 30 days, 60 days, or 18 months. So, it could be short-lived, or it may be very long.
Well, thank you very much for calling in and offering that... Yes, Council Huddle? Mr. Pash, you're first, and then Council Huddle?
Yes, this is Pash. I just wanted to let Tom know that, yes, he did send that to us, and it was on Tuesday morning, so we do have a copy of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again. Council Huddle?
Thank you. Tom Langford, John Huddle here, and we've had some conversations over here. As you know, I think at least two of our county departments share space in that building with you. If I'm understanding correctly, you are required in order to, you know, let people have their statutory and constitutional rights to court access and stuff, to have those, the public enter into that building. One of the questions we've been having is, I think you've seen, some of our departments are, you know, again, asking the public not to come, and maybe just saying by appointment only, et cetera. We're taking filings through a hole in a wall, or a drawer, a bin, or something, but for our two departments that work over there, you, they were wondering if we, I mean, we have discussed whether we should close that courthouse down. It sounds like the answer is, we really, as a county, can't do that. You, as a court, state court, have a requirement to have that thing be open, so if our departments over there want to limit public access, they would have to do it at their, at their office level versus at the front door level. Is that fair summary?
No, that's a fair summary, John, and I can, I'll share with you what's going on up here in Coos, and you know, John, I get the privilege to represent both Coos and Curry. So, in Coos, the Commissioners here are having, had the same conversation this week, and they were considering, I think, the same things that Commissioners there are considering, in that should the county close offices, close the courthouse completely and leave access to state courts, or should there be some kind of middle ground reached? Yesterday, the Commissioners here, and I'm not sure if anyone has seen their press release, but yesterday, the Commissioners made a decision in Coos County to close all county offices to only, to appointment only. So, the county offices in Coos County are closed, except for appointment only. The courthouse is open, our windows are open, but all the county offices are locked. So, if members of the public want to see a county office or do business with a county office, they must schedule that by appointment. So, that's what was decided here. If the county decided in Coos to completely shut our service and close, they were going to still leave access to the courts and the buildings when they open. They were gonna work out a mechanism for doing that. I know the mechanism there is, because the doors are locked, that lock and lock at a certain time. So, that's kind of what's going on here, and I think some of the things that the O.D. there is grappling with today, and I think that their decisions are both in the best interest of the public and personnel that work in the county's office.
Mr. Langford, we're looking at the Coos County, it's called a temporary policy, and this one is specific to employee safety, and that was done yesterday. Is that the one you're referencing?
That is, sir, and I've had it on those meetings as well with our county Commissioners here in Coos as well.
Well, thank you, and, yeah, just, the heading, the subheadings, real quick, are "General Employee Safety Measures," "Public Closures," so that's at the bottom of Page 1, "Staggered Shifts," "Telecommuting." We talked a lot about that yesterday, additionally, for certain county employees, and then the exceptions and the duration of policy. So, no surprise, this is very well done, and that was provided to us by Assessor Cullen just earlier today. So, yeah, thank you on that one, and some clarifications recognized by Council Huddle there.
John, did I answer your question?
Yes, Thomas, I, do you have any insight into the earlier question about public buildings and public bathrooms?
Everybody's smiling on that. Oh, yeah, everybody's smiling on that one.
So, you know...
We're putting you on the spot, man.
I hope that this is complete, this is completely okay. So, I'm not really sure if the buildings are open, even if they're open the way that they are in Coos, by appointment only, if we should lock the restrooms. I think that would discourage us from doing that because of other things that may happen, two trash cans and other matters like that.
Sure, what's the alternative? Yeah.
I can tell you in Coos what's happening right now, is they are looking at hiring a temporary boy to basically circle the building and just wipe down those commonly touched surfaces, and that would be their only job. And I can tell you a lot of other offices, state agencies, healthcare facilities, Coos Health and Wellness, they have assigned personnel to only do that task. So, I believe Commissioners and County Council in Coos were, are exploring or moving forward with hiring a person to only do that. They're gonna wipe down door handles and knobs and, you know, pushbars and elevator buttons, and all those commonly touched surfaces, cleaning services, they're unable to provide, because again, this lives, this can live on surfaces for at least, I've seen reported for, you know, 72 hours, and, you know, not a healthcare professional could afford to, you know, hold me on my knowledge with how long viruses live and don't live and die, but I'm looking at those kind of things. Obviously, my staff have been instructed, you must police your own space, to wash your hands and practice proper hygiene. Because we reduce our staffing patterns in half, and we're having staff work from home, and we're rotating staff with that rotation, we're being, we're able to adhere to the social distancing that's been asked for by all levels of government and all levels of healthcare professionals. So, again, it's, I think this is changing hourly. I don't know most days how it ended up being 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon, ensuring that we can, you know, continue to communicate with everyone that we have interactions with every single day, from our staff to stakeholders, and try to, you know, share this information as things change, so. I don't, I don't know what the answer is there. I would, I would most likely discourage locking the bathrooms, because I want people to wash their hands as much as they can, and so, you know, if people can't wash their hands, and there's not actually a hand sanitizer, as we all know, we can't buy it, then I want somebody to be able to get in the bathroom as fast as they can to wash their hands, and that's every 30 minutes they feel comfortable, and that's what I think we would all want.
Excuse me, can I, this is David Barnes, mind if I say something?
Always.
In order, if Curry County was to follow Coos model, what would be, would there be any preventative to just locking the front door, and whoever is, your appointment is with will come and meet you at the door and escort you into the building, and then back out again? And that really puts, you know, that answers the question of bathroom and everything else, no?
I think that's what Assessor Cullen's presently doing, and I presume Director Crockett and her staff are as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, go ahead, Assessor Cullen.
Yeah, currently, because the outside doors are open, we'd just be meeting our folks right outside our door.
Got you.
And escorting them in and out. If you made the decision to close those outside doors, we could certainly follow that practice as suggested by Mr. Barnes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Langford. Do you miss Ohio?
This is going on in Ohio and in Michigan, so, you know, my dad works for the state of Michigan, getting a nice blast of contact back in Ohio, so it's been interesting, I'm sure many of you have, to be able to talk to professionals throughout the nation that are also grappling with the same issue and these few questions, which is a complex problem.
Well, we're very glad you're here, and any more questions for Thomas Langford?
Commissioner Boy?
Yes.
I'm Josh Stantill, District Attorney. I don't have any questions for Mr. Langford, I just wanted to follow up. A little comment about the court postponing hearings and all that. We, in my office, have also canceled grand jury proceedings for this month and for April as well. I think... I know our goal is to reduce having to bring in members of the public to do jury service during this time, and I'm sure I can speak for the circuit courts when I say that as well.
Thanks, Mr. District Attorney. Any questions for either of the two last two speakers there? State courts? Go ahead.
With regard to the District Attorney, thank you for your complete answer earlier. Additionally, I wanted to make sure that Curry Community Health, Behavioral Health staff, and the EVO are on the email list for press release. Please, I do chair their advisory board for behavioral health over there, and I really appreciate to be on that list as well if possible. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, I think we're going to be looking. I'm going to recommend to the full board that we look at the Kuz County temporary policy. There's some others out there that we're aware of that might be more tailored to Curry interests, but this year, the Kuz County document looks pretty good, and then tie that all into the news release. In addition, we still want to get together this afternoon and perhaps work out, hopefully work out, a unified plan for whatever we might be facing, different options, and move forward as we can get closer to Monday. So right now, we don't have, other than the meeting this afternoon, we don't have anything scheduled for tomorrow. Is that correct?
As far as I know.
Commissioner Pash? Anything you want to add?
I don't have...
I don't have anything scheduled for tomorrow for meetings, no.
Okay, so...
Actually, I have a meeting down in South County tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, so right now, our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, and again, depending on how this continues to evolve, we might call a meeting for Monday. I doubt it. And we'd probably have to do that tomorrow and notify everyone. So we'll just go in a holding pattern, we'll learn all we can the rest of this day and tomorrow, and, you know, we're all getting updated, continual information is very helpful and pertinent to everything we're all dealing with. I just want to send a... Extend gratitude to everyone that called in, and we're also going to be discussing... I think it was Assessor... Maybe it was Clerk Cullen this morning that mentioned that we might want to have these as kind of a staff meeting in the morning, and I'm certainly open to that. I believe the commissioners, the other two commissioners, would be open to that, so we'll just carry on and, again, see how this thing evolves. Anything else last minute that somebody needs to communicate? Well, thanks again, special meeting, emergency meeting, more later. Bye all.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Hey, Eric, way to get... He and Summer...